At 7:00 p.m., would you like to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
July 2nd, 2012, at 7:00 p.m., in the regular meeting of the Greensboro Common Council is called to order. This time, question on cell phones, pages, any other questions, please be silenced. We have a roll call.
Terry.
Mary.
Lynn.
Eric.
Daryl.
Eric.
Jane.
Here.
Need to approve the matters in June 4th meeting, are there any additions or corrections?
I've got a clarification. I think I know what was intended, but we've got in here a passage on first reading and then the reading at the bottom first page and then suspension of rules. I moved again to suspend the rules on second reading. It might have been that I think I moved to pass the ordinance on second reading with a roll call vote and then we moved to suspend on third reading. So it's probably, we wouldn't suspend the rules for first reading, we'd suspend for second reading at the bottom of the page. And at the top of the second page where it says I moved to suspend the rules for second reading, it might be to actually move the ordinance, or the, yeah, the ordinance. It was repetitive there a couple of times and it just was not...
You wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't suspend the rules for first reading?
No, no, we would not. I think that's for the second reading and then the second time where it says I moved to suspend the rules for second reading, I think that should have been through a passage.
Surface practice.
Then later down it says third.
Surface practice, style sequence.
Well, it's also incorrect in how it's worded, but because it's...
Okay, Daryl will move to suspend the rules for second reading, right?
That's right. And then we have the vote. And then move to suspend the rules for second reading, I think that should mean that I moved to pass the ordinance on second reading. And then we have a roll call vote. And then we move for third reading with roll call vote and then passed on the third reading. So I just think that there was clarification there needed.
That's correct. You understand that the sequence?
No. But I would figure it out.
Would entertain a motion to accept the rules being minutes as corrected. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Before we start on old business, I'd like to introduce former mayor, Harry Bailey. With his class, Harry, would you like to tell us what's going on tonight?
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Joining us today is a group of high schoolers enrolled in a summer government class this year. And I'd like to bring them up here and let us see the inner workings of government when we get the opportunity. So here we are, hopefully they will have a plethora of questions for you and keep you here online. Thanks for allowing me.
Thank you for coming, welcome everyone. Old business, we have ordinance 2012-7, amending ordinance 2008-23 as animals in the U.S. Code has to be second reading. We voted in all in favor of it last month. And I would entertain a motion to vote on course 2012-7, amending course 2008-23 again. Second, any further discussion? Hearing done, take your roll call vote, please.
Terry.
Eric.
Lynn.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Thank you.
We need to move to suspend the rules.
We can do it if no one has already complained or any concerns. We suspend the rules for the third reading.
Do we have to suspend the rules for the third reading?
We would, quite believe. We do, don't we, you know, with...
Traditionally...
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules for the third reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Make a motion, we pass ordinance 2012-7 on third reading. Second.
Any further discussion?
It might be helpful, since we have class here, to tell you what we're doing and why we're doing it. This ordinance that we have amended, meaning we've added something to it, is really dealing with animal control and, believe it or not, we find it necessary to have to add to the things that an owner has to beware of and not let their animals do is defecate on other people's property. So we're adding that line to it. That's what we're doing. Introduced it last month, it's been advertised, we've brought it back tonight for further consideration or amendment, didn't see any need for amendment. And it takes three readings to get a bill or law changed, that's a typical process for it. And usually do that in sequence of either months or weeks or time periods, days, whatever the process might be. But we're able to, on certain things, to not take an extra month to do this and do it by suspending the rules and bringing up the third reading immediately, which is what we did tonight. That's what we're doing, why we're doing it and what's happening.
Before the, uh, our vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Thank you. New business, we have tax payments for Valio, which is now named Hitachi Powder Metals.
It's incorrect, Matt. It's Valio, STI is now a document, STI.
This here is Hitachi Powder Metals. Probably centering technologies. The payment committee did meet and we were in consensus to renew the CF1s that were submitted.
Which ones are we on, Valio or...
Hitachi. Eight for Valio and four for Hitachi. Several of these, Valio, they were able to expire several orders last year.
On the dash, on Hitachi? Just a couple of questions. I see the first one, at least the first one, might hack it, I don't know, it's the first one everybody's packing, but it's the 2002 day six slash 2004 dash two, that's the one I'm talking about. This one, when I looked at it initially, it looked like it might have, or shouldn't have expired by now.
Yeah, there were two of them.
But this one, well, there are two, are they the same one, just re-upped another time? I don't know what...
That is the one that they filed in the two, but they're started until the four.
Okay, so, and that's for a building?
Yes.
And so it would have, if it was a 10-year thing at that time, it would have. The second one that I, the last page of Hitachi again, so it's, then we've got one page, turn it over, second. The third page, it's 2011 day nine, that's going to be the resolution number. And I may have missed it, but is that the same one? Why is it, why is there two, the same, with the same number, in 11 and dash nine? I guess it's two different things.
You on same state for proof?
Yeah, on Hitachi Powder Metals. And here, my question is...
I think what you're saying, the front and back page is the same, is that correct?
It looks, it's not exactly the same, and I just didn't know if it was two separate payment requests or if it was the same, and that's all I'm asking.
What Janet said was, this particular person always sends in two, and there's a reason for it to happen.
Well, then there's, is there, are we voting on three or four? Is the question I got. I might as well go back to that. Yeah, I just... Yes. Yes. Yeah, I got you, it's, it's, but I just didn't, it doesn't make sense to me here.
Lynn.
If I'm looking at something, you're looking at Lynn, is one for the real estate and the other for the manufacturing equipment?
Well, is the second one real estate?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
I see the equip...
This is equipment.
Okay.
This is real property.
Okay, very good, thank you, and I see that. All right, very good, thanks.
So we good to go?
I would move approval of the Hitachi...
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is you. And the next is Valio. Those all, also approved by the committee to be approved.
I'll make a motion to pass the Valio tax abatements.
Are you getting more there?
Eight. All eight.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Next item on agenda is city engineer, Gary Murray.
Good evening, just wanted to bring up an expense that we did not originally anticipate when we did the gas creek project. I mean, we didn't know what was going to happen, but where this comes about is as a condition of our construction in the floodway, approval through DNR to get back by the railroad to put the pipe underneath there for every 10-inch tree that, or larger than we had to take down, DNR is making us put in five 2-inch caliber trees for every 10. So we have 100 trees that we need to plant to restore habitat, wildlife habitat along the gas creek corridor. We did have the contractor go to a nursery and then come back with a total of $15,076.43 to purchase the 100 trees and...
How much was it, 15?
And it's something that we have to do, and I was just curious as to what budget item or fund we should look at this, it's not that, it's not a rainy day, gambling, or where we get this money from to do this. We're going to have to do it. And to save money, we plan on having street department and other city folks plant them, so this is just for the trees themselves.
Was this a new regulation that came up, or why, how did we miss it?
We didn't know how many trees we would take out in order to get equipment down by the railroad and get access back there, so they said as a condition of the permit, you guys will have to agree it was five for every 10-inch tree that you do. We didn't know how many we had until we got back there and cleared and got the equipment down there.
And we had cut by 20 trees as 10 inches or larger?
Yes.
We did figure out 15,000.
We didn't know how many we were going to, we're going to have to get based on some... In the project, the whole grant was $2 million and the bid came in at $1,948,000. Plans are never perfect and we've had a couple change orders and we had a water line that we didn't know was there and a few other things that have caused some change orders that have pushed us way up close to that, or over the $2 million. Looking for your counsel as to what budget we ought to take this out of purchases.
I spoke to Bridget earlier today, rainy day doesn't give that much into it. It's got, what, 500 and some thousand? The gambling fund is 375,000. There should be more money.
We've committed the 110 for remapping out of that, so just so you know where the balances are and needs, that's why I wanted to bring this forward.
That's it, gambling.
How much do we expect there to issue?
Don't count exact number, I thought for both probably accumulated another 17,000 that's been kind of offset that over the last eight years.
17,000 a year.
Usually doesn't come until August.
Yeah, right. I don't, well, it makes a whole lot of difference.
Did you say there's another 106,000 to come out of the riverboat?
110.
110?
About 110, then.
To come off of the 300,000 that...
Right.
So we're looking at 265, okay.
As you would have, because you previously committed for the, for that, for the remapping.
So they're even plus 15.
So I just wanted to make you aware that, don't forget that you had committed some of those funds.
So people aren't 25, 37.
It hasn't rained for a while, there's plenty in there.
Reverse. It's a drought fund now.
That's made the project go quicker. Six of one half dozen the other make.
I'll make a motion to be taken out of the riverboat.
Any further discussion?
Daryl.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jane. Yes.
Thank you, council. Gary, before you leave, this is a project that's well-deserving what it's costing to have done. What, I've been having to stand here for minutes to explain this to the class, the audience. Class, you've probably seen how Lincoln Street floods when we have big rains, like in '08, '09, it was up to signs, down on Lincoln Street, stop signs and things. And we were able, with the help of an ex-state representative, Cleo Duncan, to acquire $2 million from the 2008 FEMA funds. We got $2 million out of it, three left, I tried to get it all so we could pay for this, all of it, but we got 2 million. And what that would do is lower the water level 36 inches in what they call a 100-year flood. A 100-year flood can be a flash flood as well.
Well, it's got a 1% chance of occurring in any one year.
And we had it two years in a row.
They just defined it that way as 100-year flood. It's not that it occurs once every 100 years.
For example, there's businesses on Lincoln Streets, those residences, one person had just purchased the old apartment house, the Holtz Hotel, hotel, two years in a row, it flooded out, had to redo his building and buy new furniture, and in a time like that, you know, insurance company will pay again, three years in a row. He would have to walk away, get public service down there, good energy that he can depend on, other businesses. So this is, we got $2 million, but we're having to subsidize the overcost, when I say things weren't planned on, trying to save people's houses and businesses. Gary, would you like to add to that?
And you've probably seen the two ponds, one is up by A to Z, that's complete, the other one is by Carousel Learning Center and GCom. And starting next Monday, they will be putting an additional five-foot diameter culvert underneath the railroad. And so the holding ponds and the pipe will, in combination, lower that 100-year flood elevation.
And the funds we're using for most of this overcost, I'll call it, I'll call it over $2 million we're saving, is coming from the gambling funds of Indiana. So we're spending that money from, which is a good cause, spending it for... Any questions from the class?
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Can I ask Gary, one more? Gary and I spoke right before the meeting, and maybe it'd be a good idea for Gary to maybe put this out in the public, or the radio, newspaper could help us. I had a landowner ask me, a property owner, ask me about the gas creek behind his house, asking if it's the city's responsibility to clean that, there's a lot of rush in there, if you would answer that so it would go on record.
It is the property owners along the creek to keep that clear. City does own the property at GCom and at the A to Z area. Want the, the bottom area that's in cattails and things on the A to Z pond is classified as wetland, it's under jurisdiction of DNR and Corps of Engineers, and we can't really do anything down there. The other one by GCom is not in a floodway, we own it as the property owner. We are clearing, Marcus, using some of his stormwater money to have that cleared out. And we are doing a little bit downstream of the railroad, between the railroad and South Michigan Avenue and having some of that cleaned out. But as far as keeping debris and dredging, that is for adjacent property owners to do.
Thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is Scott Chastain. Chief, Chastain.
Good evening. Just real quick, just wanted to kind of touch base with you. Earlier in the year, we had had some discussion about the possible replacement of Engine 2, which is the 1979 American France telestrator hopper truck. Some of you did come down to the station and look at the truck. We had, when we spoke before, we talked about later in the year, starting the process to move forward with this. That's kind of what I'm going to kind of inform you, just that you know now, that's kind of what we're doing. We did pull in, Councilman Wagner had asked about other options out there. We have had the opportunity to find what's called demo trucks. They're not used, but they're a new truck that travels around and fire departments look at them and run them and so on. And we've been able to find a couple of decent demo trucks that are out there that we feel that hopefully, you know, when we go out to bid on this truck, they could come in and we could save, you know, a little bit of money from what we would if we were doing a new truck. So we've got our specs written, there's a copy of our specs here, 104 pages, explaining what all, everything, you know, we want on the truck. If you don't have it on the specs, you don't get it, if you don't spec, you know, if you don't spec a seat on it, you're going to have to put a bucket in because there's not going to be a seat, so. But just wanted to give you a heads up that probably, hopefully within the next month, you'll be seeing us go on a bid for this truck. We'll see where we come in price-wise, just because we bid it doesn't mean we have to buy it. If the prices come in way up here and we do not have the funds, then at that point, you know, we can throw them all out and try to figure out what we've got. Right now, I'm working with Bridget, and we've got a considerable amount in the KIM Fire Fund that if we come back to this, we need to be appropriated, so we would come back to you guys to appropriate the money, but I don't want to do that now because we may not have to appropriate all of it, we only want to appropriate what we have to. And plus, if the truck does, if we don't go with a demo, we go with a new truck, it may be after the first of the year before the truck would come in anyway, so at that point, we wouldn't have to do the additional appropriation, we could just appropriate the money in next year's budget. Just wanted to give you a heads up, so if you see this in the paper, you're not going to have to explain it all, so. Anybody have any questions?
Scott, when you were telling me about the sales model, when they should take it out and demonstrate, that seemed to be a good buy.
There, we've actually found two or three really good deals out there. The problem is, they don't last long, so that's kind of where we're going ahead and starting with the process now. You know, they may not be there whenever we, you know, whenever we get to the point to, you know, we're ready for it, but...
We go through the process and some...
But a lot of companies are doing it where they're bringing demos down the line, and so hopefully we can, we can catch one. And if not, we hold off and we look at it. We're not tied into anything at this point, but we just want to move forward with it.
You have a space for older, Scott?
Probably what we would do with that is, we could do one of two things, trade it in, or we could just sell it outright. There's a few of the small volunteer departments have shown some interest where their area has grown up with some larger homes, you know, the largest square footage homes, and this truck would be a decent truck for them to get started in the aerial business with. And actually, the day after we spoke at... And actually, the day after we spoke at the last meeting, whenever I spoke with you folks, I got two phone calls from a couple of departments then saying, hey, I heard you talking to a truck. I'm like, how did you know that? So evidently, they're listening to P R E or reading the paper once.
Well, I think it definitely needs updating. Seventy-nine, that's.
Again, if you guys need to stop in and visit, feel free to stop in and visit, look at the truck. Like I said, we're looking somewhere in there for about six hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Bridget.
In your packet, there should have been a budget calendar for two thousand, salary budget calendar for two thousand thirteen. Wanted to get council feedback on this calendar and see if you have any questions. We had discussed maybe starting the process tonight, but after we got to looking at the current software that we use and how we post things, it didn't seem feasible to try to get you guys to look at first readings tonight when you didn't have true fund balances, appropriation balances as of June thirtieth, because that's what DLGF will make their basis on. Ju, and you'll see on your calendar, DLGF workshop is July the twentieth. And probably what we'll do at that point is we'll meet with the DLGF and we'll take all the Form Ones and prepare an advertising statement. And then, once we get it advertised, then we will provide you guys a reinforced copy until the twenty-third, so you'll have ample time to look at it for August sixth.
That's for salaries and budget book?
Yeah, you, you could, you could probably, or the way I'm looking at it, you'll be able to do a first reading at an island office and say, it's on both. But you'll have salaries and budget numbers. We can do the salaries sooner if that's what you want to do. I just, that's kind of why I'm here tonight, other than being here to take your minutes. I thought I would get some feedback from you.
No, I don't know if it would be necessary.
As long as we've got a little bit of advance with information, you said the twenty-third?
Yeah, the week of the twenty-third, that would be Friday the twentieth. Basically, when we meet with them that day, we'll have all the forms repaired that need to be advertised. So at that point, we have, we would have to have everything. I know right now, I think the only thing we're waiting on is for a Form One from the airport. Billings just had some surgery, so he's been out, looked for a couple of weeks, so we're hoping to get some information from him next week or so, then we'll get all everything for his calendar. The, one, one question that I did, that got brought up, and I wanted to get your, a blessing on, was to combine the billing commissioner and the city engineer budget. Right now, they're two separate budgets. Would it be okay to combine them? They're both from the general fund. One person operating both those budgets, so I don't know if that's okay with you guys. I mean, I guess it could be separated back out down in the future. I mean, it's still going to be a, a general fund advertisement. Right now, it's just departmentalized. And we did ask Gary Murray to submit it combined, but then we thought maybe we should at least, when we were presenting the calendar, we would double check and make sure that that was okay with you guys. And we can leave it separate. It's not, it's six of one, half of the other. I think for us and for the department, it might be, and even for you guys, it would be more of a department to merge, basically, or merge the two budgets.
I haven't thought about that first, first, first thought. I don't know like that, how the answer is.
Let's say, Mount Mount.
This kid is not an issue. Like you said, do one less look at.
It's, it's either two Form Ones or one Form One. I think it's fine if we combine them.
Still don't look at everything individually.
Right. Yeah, you're still going to look at it. I mean, you're still going to have office supplies versus salary versus equipment repair.
Maybe it will save one of those trees he's trying to.
Maybe. Maybe we could put at least some money in the general fund for a couple of committee attorneys.
So each one had a line item for supply, so it just depended which one, what I attached a claim form to, whether it came out of the engineer's office or the building office. Or just combining under one line item now, so.
So general census, okay, on that? If you change your mind, let me know, but otherwise, we'll just go ahead and, I think Gary's Form One, one, come out until you guys get a chance to do your thing. That, that's really the only thing, like I said, I just wanted you guys to take a look at the dates and, and, and for you guys, it's really, everything's going to start Monday, August the sixth. There's some things that we'll need to do in our office, and of course, we'll submit all the information to the county auditor for the county review in August. That's on Tuesday, August twenty-first. That's when county council will start reviewing. I know, Glenn, you asked about planning and non-mining budgets last time. That's what that is. We have to submit a notice to county for non-mining review.
Right, I, I.
Which will have already advertised our budget and everything by the.
Usually takes about two meetings.
You'll have already had a first reading by the time they even review it.
Right.
Can we set the meeting? August thirteenth, I think, August thirteenth.
This will take usually about a couple, two or maybe three budget meetings to.
Yeah, the plan was to do a second reading in September and then a third reading in October. Is that okay, Jamie, or is it?
No, no, I was just wondering if we have a separate meeting, just to kind of go over the budget on the thirteenth.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Workshop type, our little workshop. Gotcha.
Yeah, because you, they take two, three.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I didn't put those on here, but then we can, that's just kind of the, this is just kind of a summary, but we can always add the workshop, our workshops in there. That's thirteenth. I'm thinking that would be one of the nights we can get together.
Yeah. So are we going, are we going to set some dates now first?
That's why I was hoping if that would.
I don't have a problem doing that. I'm, we're doing three different things here right now, at least I'm thinking of three different things, so we can set dates.
Well, if you don't want those dates added to this calendar, we can go ahead and print this calendar, and then we can move on after workshop dates on it, and I can then do some.
Do we have to formally approve calendar?
No.
I didn't think. So it's just, calendar's really for all kinds of.
It's really just for.
And, and we'll advertise the other things at appropriate times in. So.
This is just kind of a guideline for you guys.
Exactly. You want the thirteenth? Is that a good date for you?
That's a good day. That's why I was thinking if we could do the thirteenth, and then, once we're done, how do you think we can decide where we're at, whether we need, you know, and then we can maybe decide what night to set up after that.
You're looking at an evening then, on the thirteenth?
Is that conflicting with any other city meetings, the second Monday of the month? No, I figured.
No, because their party's still last Monday of the month, I think.
When's the water board meeting? Thursday, thirteenth?
Thirteenth, right.
We can start at six if you want, or we can start at seven, I'm easier to.
Six is fine.
Wouldn't want the department heads there to present their.
Actually, they're good. Yeah, we probably need to there to explain it, but we're going to have a budget in front of us here, and we're going to have to pass on the sixth, the week before that.
I know the last few years, what we've done is, we've passed the first reading, and then on the, we've had a workshop that actually dove into each line item in the workshop.
Since July before the second meeting.
Yeah. But we'd always, we'd usually pass the first reading.
Is that in July before the first reading then?
I think so. Now, you said.
I thought it was August last year.
I was thinking it was August last.
I don't know what the recent times were, but I know that's the case in previous years.
Well, it was August. Yeah, I don't think the second reading was done until September.
And frankly, we don't have to worry about second reading either. We can link things kind of like they are after the first reading. It's the third reading that really has to be done for the, the real numbers.
Let's go for Monday, August thirteenth, and for our workshop.
Time is six P M.
Six P M.
I think six is good.
And then you do want to just decide after the, that meeting and whether we want it, well, after the September meeting, maybe, if that's when your second reading will be? You may have some any questions for me?
Any further questions, counsel?
Yeah, I got, um, so what should we expect when we see a budget given to us for salary increases and/or just, well, budget? I mean, you're, you're advertising something already on the twenty-seventh, so you're going to have something prepared, have have something.
We've asked the, we have Form Ones for everybody except for the airport, and.
The salaries, we said, for hourly, and how much was it increased plus longevity?
It was a salary amount. It wasn't an hourly amount. It was five hundred dollars.
Yeah, plus longevity.
Plus the, yeah, the longevity would be calculated in with that.
So around eight hundred dollars total.
Okay, and that's across the board for the hourly and the professionals.
The hourly, hourly people were higher.
Department heads and elected officials was twelve hundred dollars. No longevity, so that would be just across the board.
Where's that starting?
And a thousand for council.
All right, you say five hundred for the hourly?
Five hundred hourly, twelve hundred for department heads and elected officials, and a thousand, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, I think it was a thousand for council.
Because it's a five thousand per year right now, I think. And what, what based that on was other municipal entities?
Fifty-five hundred.
Like six thousand.
It'll be six thousand. It was, it's fifty-five. I thought it was five, that's fifty-five.
It's five.
It's five, it's twelve fifty.
Is it full fifty quarter?
Yeah, it's five.
It'll be six thousand then.
Other, other entities, government entities.
I had a couple different notes on that.
Our size, our six thousand a year, maybe insurance as well, that's something that, our, also a lot of those, this time. I think six thousand, maybe meetings that we have, it's, it's worth it, it's fair.
Any other questions for you?
Thank you, Bridget. And we have Mr. King, Councilman King.
Well, I, I just wanted to bring up the discussion on fireworks, because we've been, I've been through a pretty dry season, but I don't know if we need to talk about it. If you want to just kind of discuss this declaration.
What was, what I did today is proclamation on, basically, it's a civic, civil emergency. As far as the banning of open fires, which we already have city ordinance on, but the fireworks as well, it's in the ordinance. And so we've done that, Bridget signed off on it, to attest to that, I've signed off on it. We have to post it to five local buildings, city bill cons.
County clerk has that copy.
Yeah, county clerk has a copy, Bridget has a copy, we'll post it to courthouse, city hall, fire department, police department, library. And let everyone know, we will, we will review it daily, on a daily basis. If we get rain, things start to, or moisture, then we'll rescind the proclamation at that time.
And I think it's maybe also important to note that the county adopted that same thing today, this morning.
And you know, it's, it's something that you, you hate to do with the fourth of July period, but, you know, I think being responsible and not considering ramifications and taking that chance in a fire.
Yeah, prudent to, prudent to do. I'm going to ask you if you had any, frankly, given the conditions that we're under.
And the county commissioner, they, they will review it daily as well, but they'll, they'll have the next minute to reach it out, they'll look at it in closer. They could rescind it between before that, if we kept raining. Sorry for inconvenience that happens. Any questions for the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Um, when he was talking about those trees he was going to plant, it was, did he say it was fifteen thousand for one hundred trees?
Yes.
So our trees really like one hundred fifty dollars for each tree?
Yes.
How big are the trees?
Two inches.
Eight, eight or.
Is that one hundred fifty?
Uh-huh.
That is crazy.
DNR, DNR selects the species that are allowed to plant. We can't just go by the cheapest trees. We have to have so many white oaks, so many red oaks, so many under, what they call undercandidly species. Some of them have to be thirder, sweeter, down by the creek, others up on the drier areas. They tell us exactly what.
We feel the same as you do.
They'll stand about twelve foot tall, two inches around. Where are you getting them? Uh, Genesis Farms is where I got this one.
Where's that from, Mark?
That was built. You got one, well, that's it? That's all I've got now. You're going to get more? Thousand, thousand? Hopefully, we do. That's, that's a pretty good price. I call.
That does sound like a lot of money. I would take it over to Walmart, see if they have.
I took, I took a purple one, and the guy told me, I said, it'll be at least twelve grand.
And here, here's the situation. We took that bid, we will not spend over that. Oak is going to be less, and if we had to hire, to help have it hired done, it'd be a lot more.
They want about four hundred a tree to come in and plant. The worst problem is there's no guarantee and there's no warranty because they don't plant them. But we have to pay another twenty thousand dollars to get the warranty and have them planted.
So we use city, city employees to save us twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. And we will take the lowest bid on the trees.
Mayor, maybe there's a government class that might want to help us plant them. Maybe.
Let's get right on that. Ask them that point.
Actually, these guys were saying, they know where there's some out on Lincoln Street, they might sell back to you.
Are they, are they living? Since you've been watering them, it's gone?
They've been watered, so that's all I can say.
Any questions from the class?
When are our fireworks going to be, like, for sure?
Pardon?
When are our fireworks going to be?
We don't know that yet.
Right now, right now, the fireworks at the fairgrounds are trying to work with the Fall Festival Committee, and they're trying to maybe hold them in conjunction with the Fall Festival, so trying to keep it into a festive activity, but, so whenever the Fall Festival is.
Maybe you should shoot them off.
Providing we get rain.
If there's nothing else, they had to take a motion to adjourn. Second.